Hi councillors, we move on to the substantive part of the meeting although that was probably the more interesting part I would say, but possibly. We have an apology from councillor Staines and I move from the chair that we accept the apology, seconded councillor Hall. Any discussion? Put it, all those in favour please say aye.
Aye.
Against? Carried. Item four, confirmation of the agenda, I move from the chair that the agenda as published be confirmed, seconded councillor Betson-Pope. All those in favour please say aye.
Aye.
Against? Carried. Item five, it must be, declaration of interest, I'll move the two recommendations there, notes the elected members' interest register and confirms the management plan for elected members' interests. Seconded councillor Elder, no discussion, I'll put it, all those in favour please say aye. Against? Carried. Right, on to the minutes, item six, the ordinary council meeting on 28th of March, I move from the chair that the minutes of that meeting, find it here, it's on page... I'll move it anyway. Seconded councillor Newell. Any discussion? Not, I'll put it, all those in favour please say aye.
Aye.
Against? Carried. On to the minutes of committees, Infrastructure and Services and Networks Committee, councillor Lewis.
Thank you your worship, I move that the council notes Part A items one to nine and public forum of the minutes of the Infrastructure Services and Networks Committee meeting held on the 10th of April 2017.
Seconded councillor Mallon, any discussion? Put it, all those in favour please say aye.
Aye.
Against? Carried. Community and Culture Committee, councillor Hall.
Thank you your worship, I move that council note Part A items one to twelve in the public forum of the minutes of the Community and Culture Committee meeting held on 11 April 2017 and further takes Part C items over the minutes of that meeting held on the 11th of April in the non-public part of this meeting.
Seconded councillor Laufisa, discussion? Put it, all those in favour please say aye.
Aye.
Against? Carried. Item nine, Planning and Environment Committee, councillor Betson-Pope.
Mr, your worship, I move that the council confirm the public part of the minutes of the Planning and Environment Committee held on 11 April 2017 as correct record.
Seconded councillor Steadman.
Aye.
Thank you. Any discussion? Put it, all those in favour please say aye.
Aye.
Against? Carried. Okay, on to the minutes of the community board, we have item...
I move the minutes of the community boards and agenda items 10 and 11 together.
Right, that's fine, is there a seconded? Seconded councillor Hall, is there any discussion on either of those? I'll put it, all those in favour please say aye.
Aye.
Against? Carried. Reports, item 12, Masters Games Service Level Agreement and Statement of Intent. Do you want to introduce this or do you want to go straight into that question? Straight into questions? Any questions councillors? Anything on this that you... I'm clear about councillor Lord.
Yeah, I was just wondering about, a session of report about the council might be expected to cop up any losses that are made. I'm not really so much worried about the service level agreement as it's written but just the reserves that they've got on hand at the moment, Masters Games, right, so I'll put a couple of questions, the reserves that they've got on hand and what a loss might look like potentially, just I had wondered if the last couple of Masters Games had decreased in numbers and the other question I just had was around, it says that there's no naming sponsor right and in the service level agreement is at page 70, oh sorry, no, the back of it, page 71, it says that the New Zealand Masters Games, where is it, 4.1, the trust, no, sorry, it was above that somewhere, bit wrong page, oh yeah, top of 71, the New Zealand Masters Games Company is responsible for securing the Masters Games naming sponsors as well as maintaining the relationship with the New Zealand Government, the Sport NZ and I was just trying to work out, is that our responsibility of the person that's working here or is that someone else and if they haven't got one should be worried about that? Sorry, that's a lot.
Yeah, there is reserve sitting in the Masters Games account at the moment from the previous, the 2014 games that make a profit as such, so we have 102,000 sitting in reserves for the biennial games, we are expecting a budgeting a loss for these games of 46,000, one of those reasons is due to the lack of a naming sponsor but we do have reserves to cover those costs.
In relation to the question about the naming sponsor, it is actually the Masters Games Company role to look at that, we've had some fairly robust discussions with them about the fact that there isn't a national naming sponsor at this point and so we are going ahead to explore a sponsor for the Dunedin Masters Games to really focus on reducing our deficit, so we are going to take responsibility for that.
Councillor Mallon.
Thanks, just a couple of questions, first one is, you note that there is, in the service level agreement, there's a minor change in the reporting line within the DCC, what is that change?
That meant that the community development team of which the Masters Games manager is part of our team moved our line of reporting from a different general manager last year, so we now report to Sandy Graham as general manager of governance and strategy.
I figured it was rather minor, just wanted to catch it. And just to follow up, councillor Lord, what other sponsors have been identified?
So we've, I don't want to provide detail yet because we've yet to make approaches but we've been doing some research on a number of sponsors, looking at their compatibility with the games and due to make approaches to them in the next two months.
Okay, and I'm just looking at the service level agreement on, in section 4.3 on page 73 says that council must agree to underwrite in the six month period preceding the games and that would be August 3rd to make that six month period, so are we obliged to do it six months out or between six months and February 3rd?
We have a, we report to council in October as to the financial stability of the games and it's up to council to decide whether or not we proceed with the games or we call them off.
So, in the service level agreement it says six months out from the start of the games, which would be August, so you would not be inside that six months, I'm just wondering because I noticed in the statement of intent it's October, so it's actually, it's just a slight disparity between the service level agreement and the statement of intent.
Yeah, I think traditionally it has been October that we've reported each year, so if we need to make that change we'll look in a minute.
This was put in when we had games that ran at a loss and it was to give the council an opportunity to withdraw if we felt that the loss, when we agreed to the underwrite, it was to make sure the council had the opportunity to withdraw if the council felt that the loss was going to be too large to manage or, yeah, too large.
No, it's actually just making sure that the two are aligned actually, just in terms of the timing. And just the last question, the Community Environment Committee in July 2016, you reported on the 2016 Masters Games and on paragraph 27 in that report you say that the long term planning will need to occur to ensure we grow future competitive numbers and participants of the 2014 games that did not return were being surveyed to understand the reasons and that could be used to develop a report which would then come back to the committee. Has that report come back to the committee?
No.
Okay.
We went to our sports partners and that to see if there was any planning that we could do within that organisation, attract those participants back.
Okay, so will there be a report around developing the plan to bring more people into the city or are we just going to do the underwriting?
No, we will provide a report, we are actively focusing on trying to maintain our numbers if not increase them and as part of that this year, Vicky's just returned from promoting our games at World Masters Games in Auckland, which is something new that we've never, well obviously it's never been in Auckland, but we've taken that opportunity so we can report on a number of things that we are aiming to do to minimally maintain the numbers, optimally increase them.
Great, thanks.
Councillor Hall.
Thank you your worship, just a couple of questions, we have the rights to the event through until 2036 but not an obligation to do so until 2036, is that right?
Correct.
And what is the notice period if you like, where the city to wind up its interest in the event?
We have to say we don't know, we don't know.
Yeah, thank you, and secondly, and I appreciate that there's no legal obligation for the service level agreement or the statement of intent but thank you for that, it speaks to a fairly narrow part of council's strategic framework and I don't know when the last time was, but this was substantively overhauled, but I wonder if it would be, would staff be averse to reviewing it over the next 21, it'd be two years I guess before it comes back to council, in that time we could look to see how the event could deliver more broadly on council's strategic objectives.
Staff would be happy to do that and also would take into account the fact that we are under a festivals and events review and there may be some changes from that as well, so, yeah.
Thank you.
Councillor Ross.
Thank you your worship, Vicky, can you expand a little bit more about your visit to Auckland last week and Masters Games, the World Masters there, did you attract a lot of interest?
Yeah, we did, we took the opportunity to hold a booth at the World Masters Games, they had an exhibition in the five days leading up to the opening of the event, we collaborated with Enterprise Dunedin and promoted a New Zealand Masters Games Dunedin destination booth rather than solely the New Zealand Masters Games, so we had three resources out there, myself, Tammy Jackman from the events team and Sharon Berger who's from Hysight which was really useful in terms of the destination promotion, the World Masters Games had 28,000 people attending it, 25,000 of those were participants and the other three were supporters. In that lead up to the event they checked in 21,000 in those five days and the way my voice was, I think we spoke to 99% of them, a lot of internationals come in the first early part of the week and then the local New Zealanders in the second part of the week and I've been back just over a week now and the increase in emails that I've received and phone calls of people wanting to know about when we open our registrations for the New Zealand Masters Games has increased than what we'd normally get previously, you know, this time and previous years, so I do think there will be a positive effect and roll-on effect on our numbers.
Councillor Lord.
Well, just one other question, I noticed that the option two was that we don't agree with the statement of intents and I noticed that one of the disadvantages of that was that you had that disadvantage and it may look bad for the city and I'm just wondering if you'd like to comment on the fact that New Zealand Masters Games haven't provided us a naming sponsor, if you would see any embarrassment should maybe be deflected from us but to them.
We'd like to, if that was the case, if we didn't go ahead with it and that, I think the New Zealand Masters Games Company does need to take some responsibility for that as well.
Councillor Elder.
Given that the baby boom generation is growing and yet it seems like there is a bit of a fall in attendance, does the Masters Games Company itself have any responsibility for promotion? Whose responsibility is that?
We are presently looking at the franchise agreement with the New Zealand Masters Games Company and the previous one it did have some responsibility for promotion, the joint promotion, up until this point from my experience there hasn't been a lot of support from them to provide that.
It would be fair to say that we've had some negotiations with the company about responsibilities but we're not going to sit back and wait for those negotiations to become something positive, so we've moved ahead to focus on our own increase, you know, ways to increase marketing and promotion. Thank you.
Can I follow up on that then and take it that the reason for that is that the benefits of the largest participatory event in the city accrue to the city rather than to the company?
That's right and as...
To go as a responsibility.
That was one of the reasons why we took the measure instead of partnering with the Wanganui Masters Games and having standard World Masters Games to actually partner with our economic development team and focus on Dunedin tourism, either way we feel like that's, you know, this could be a potential win for us, if people don't come to Masters Games they may come to Dunedin for something else.
Okay, without further questions, would someone like to move the recommendations? Councillor Betson-Pope, seconded councillor Newell, is there any discussion? Wish to speak to it, councillor Betson-Pope? If there being none I'll put it, all those in favour please say aye.
Aye.
Against? Carried. Now on to item 13, the proposed DCC carbon management policy, page 92. Welcome Maria, welcome Andrew.
Would you like to introduce this or would you wish to go straight into this? Is this on or off?
Yeah, just to say that this policy supports the DCC's ability to manage its carbon liabilities in a clear strategic and coherent manner and that following council's previous discussion on this policy and positive feedback from the Te Aturra partnership, two changes have been made that Andrew will just run through.
So at the January council meeting councillor Hawkins and Morrison requested that we add in 6.9 which is regarding purchasing NZUs that align with and support council's strategies and plans, so that's been included and the other inclusion is on 7.4 which is really embedding this policy within the reporting which will be really useful, reports to council will include a section explaining how carbon management policy has been considered, so those changes have been made.
Yeah, and when it comes to the reporting we'll probably add that into the sustainability section rather than putting in a new section just for carbon.
Questions, councillor Hawkins.
Thank you your worship and thank you for sending that back around the loop once more, the reports speak to questions or comments that were raised by the advisory group, the Te Aturra advisory group and answers those in this report, I'm just checking in to make sure that those answers have gone back to that group and satisfied them rather than necessarily us.
The answers haven't yet gone back to them, well we're taking it back to them at their next meeting so it'll be part of a response because they were responding on quite a few things, so we're collating that to go back to them.
So were they not satisfied with those answers but we adopt this policy here, that wouldn't seem...
Idea, were you not concerned that this is not substantive enough to make any...
I don't think they were substantive to be honest, I think the partnership found it quite difficult to comment because of the technical nature of the policy, so I think they were positive about the idea of it and their main concerns are around can we actually implement it.
And these are, sorry, these are currently questions that we had at the last council meeting as well which is around our resourcing capacity and the partnership have asked that we create some resources as well to allow them to make informed sort of seeing how this works at operational level, so that is the work that we are currently beginning to look at now which is how we are resourcing it, what activities we've currently got and staffing and capacity, so it's all that operational aspect of it that they were questioning and it mirrored what came up at council meeting last, last time and yes, which will be addressed as within the report, as mentioned in the report.
And when you're specifically referring to the commitments of council under 6.1 and 6.2 in terms of adequate resourcing to manage both our legal obligations under the ETS but also our strategic objectives under various strategies and commitments.
Yeah, that's correct.
And so currently do we not have the adequate resourcing to deliver on those?
I think that's a question, Aaron, councillor Hawkins, and we just need to work out what's needed, I think it's clear that we've put in place the framework for doing this work but now it's kind of rubber hits the rope time in terms of seeing what that actually means in practice and as we do our operational business as usual.
And just lastly, can you explain a bit about option, under option to adopt a revised carbon management policy, one of the advantages of that as listed is may better meet the council's preferences for a carbon management policy, the disadvantages of the recommended option is that it may not meet all of council's expectations, it's not made explicit which expectations may not be met, so can you talk to that?
I think for us that's just in case there was something that you raised today that we haven't yet considered, I mean this has gone round several hoops now, so I hope that we've covered everything and that we will meet your expectations through this policy but it's just in case you raised something today that we haven't thought about.
Yeah, it's hard to know when new expectations will be thrown at you, thank you.
Councillor Vandis.
I raised the concern at our last meeting about a 25 page report simply to look at in detail what emissions council came up with, I wondered about the great value that was seen by some staff in that, in this particular policy on page 89 it says under scope, organisational scope, 3.1.1, that this policy doesn't just apply to employees of the DCC but it also implies to contractors and it also applies to volunteers and people with honorary and unpaid staff status, what really worries me is that we look like forcing this policy on any potential contractors and the costs of a contractor having to comply with this policy may be significant, they may even rival the costs we already have with health and safety, have you looked at what the effect is on A, limiting the number of potential contractors which we may have, smaller contractors that don't have the resources to basically absorb the costs of enforcing this policy, have you looked at the costs up to the rate pay that this policy will have by A, limiting the number of contractors and B, increasing the compliance requirements of our contractors, have you looked at those additional costs?
I think it would be fair to say that in detail no, we are at the point of, we are just at the point of looking at those what we call scope three of contractor emissions through the CMAS programme, any contractors where the emissions trading scheme comes into play will be thinking about these things already, we have to manage our liabilities under the emissions trading scheme and so our contractors by necessity are pulled into that.
I completely understand that emissions trading is part of our statutory obligations and obviously we are going to meet those anyway, what I'm concerned about is by far the bulk of our contractors, I'm talking about the roading, drainage, all these, I'm talking about forestry and what effect that's going to have, now you said you haven't quantified what sort of costs are going to be involved there, what, I mean you're asking us essentially to enforce this policy for contractors but you haven't basically found out what it's going to cost us in terms of A, a smaller number of contractors to draw from and B, obviously greater expense for these contracts having to meet what is really quite an onerous policy.
As, and we mentioned this last time, as is raised in 25A in response to these concerns in the report, we already have planned this year to do a supply chain greenhouse gas emissions review as under our CMAS which we are required to do to begin to identify where our carbon is and where our carbon like emissions are coming from, so we are initially doing a scoping exercise this year, I think the intention of this is again just to sort of give that the foundation to say, well look, let's actually identify, starting with the larger contracts, what carbon is at play, the intention after that of what we do is up to council to agree whether we do begin to implement and ask our contractors to minimise or to actively manage and the costs associated that will be managed in the future, I think the point of the policy is to support the actions, CMAS, Compact Eme, where we are already required to map, identify and quantify carbon and begin to manage it in collaboration with our partners, I don't think there's any real intention to go out and scope all of the smaller contracts, I appreciate that there's a lot of work there and there's also good rewards there, but again, part of this policy is initially ETS is the major liability and concern we have here but B is actually allowing council to start to quantify, identify where carbon is and inform where we're going forward, so it's an ability to inform and get the evidence base which is as I say initially this year we're going to be doing a review under CMAS and what we do out of that is up for a council debate.
So given your answer then and given that the current policy applies to all contractors, would you be happy with changing 3.1.1 to read all employees of the DCC including temporary employees and larger CMAS contractors? Because currently it's a catchall for all contractors and to me this would create an unacceptable bar to those small contractors as well as a significant cost to larger contractors. Could we drop to contractors altogether, would the policy then still just apply to the DCC, temporary employees, staff members, volunteers, do you really want at this stage to include all contractors in this policy because including all contractors has vast implications in terms of cost for future contracts?
I think it's hard, it's very hard to assess what the costs might be by doing the supply chain analysis that we intend to do, it's pretty high level, it doesn't at this point involve the contractors reporting anything, it's almost like a quite simple calculation based on how much we spend with that contractor and what area of work they're working in, then we work out what their emissions might, would look like, we're not asking them to report at this stage.
At this stage.
Yeah, at this stage.
But the policy actually does.
The policy doesn't ask them to report at this point?
No, but it says the policy applies to 3.1.1 and contractors, so the whole policy applies to contractors if we're to approve this as it is.
I understand what you're saying and I think it's a very valid point but I think to look at the DCC in isolation from its supply chain is not a real picture of the carbon emissions profile of the organisation, so we have to include the contractors to be able to see the full picture.
But we're not voting on a picture here, we're voting on a policy which must be followed.
Councillor, councillor Vandis, you have been given an answer and you're trying to dissuade the staff member which I think is a bit unfair, it'll be for council to decide this, but I further don't think you understand that what has been explained is that this is seeking information, not imposing anything on anybody and if there is no point in getting half the information if you need all of it to base the future proposals on, so you have been given an answer on this, could you move on to the next question?
I don't believe my question's been answered and the question is, how are we going to expect all contractors, because this currently says applies to all contractors, how are we going to expect all contractors... we going to expect all contractors to comply with this policy and not significantly raise costs for a-
Because nothing, it has been explained, nothing is expected of contractors at the moment.
Yeah, it's, your points are noted. The policy, the only clause within the policy that speaks specifically to contractors is 5.1.4, I believe, which says identify, assess and monitor the carbon emission profiles and activities of external contractors. The rest of it is very specific to DCC activities, which is to monitor, you know, and within activities, so operationalise the management. But if it is, if you like, we can add in under 3.1.1, all employees of the DCC, including temporary employees and contractors, as far as is practicable. And that will allow us to extend and scope and explore areas as we see practicable.
The council staff view of what's practical and my experience as a contractor to the DCC are so vastly different that that wouldn't relate-
That is not a question, so we'll disregard that. Are there any other questions? Councillor O'Malley?
I'm just, now going to go back to where I was. It's a discussion point, discussion point 20. Other options to better quantify, manage, reduce landfill emissions, et cetera, have been implemented or remain under consideration and development. I guess I'm just reiterating my feeling that the landfill's probably going to be our biggest liability here, and looking back towards policy, I would like to have a clear understanding of where we are going forward in terms of mitigating those responsibilities and what we're doing with reducing the rate of the landfill. Thanks.
Are there any further questions? Sorry, it's a question. Councillor Vandis?
If we were to stay with the status quo and not vote on this particular policy, would we still be in a position where we could easily meet our ETS requirements and all our statutory obligations?
I'd have to say no. I think we're at a bit of vastly increased risk of missing our liabilities under ETS and also having financial consequences of just not having consistent processes and dedicated, under this, dedicated resourcing and putting the attention to this that we need. We're seeing increasing costs, we're seeing increasingly complex legislation and activities, and we do need a consistent platform to build there on. So I'd have to say, no, this status quo would expose us to a significant risk.
Could you, after this meeting sometime, email me the ETS document that actually indicates essentially what you've just said? Because I haven't seen it. Thank you.
Councillor Benson-Pope?
Remove the recommendation.
Having removed the recommendation, right. So the recommendation is for option one, it's been moved, seconded councillor Newell, do you wish to speak to it?
Well, I think we're all only too aware of the issue of carbon management is very much an evolving process, evolving too slowly but nonetheless evolving in this country and elsewhere. And the difficulty is, in the context of our operation, is that so very much of this council's operation is undertaken by people who are contracted to provide a service of various kinds, right or wrong, and you know my view on that anyway, but clearly it would be a nonsense not to include the implications of all our activities, and given that we've had the unequivocal assurance a number of times that there's no impost on any contractor at this point anyway, and there will be a further council discussion once we have that information about the quantification of that, there's no issue. So I think we just need to make some progress here.
Better speaker, councillor Vandis?
The cost of getting the DCC contractors to do anything in this city is already vastly in excess of my experience of what it would cost in the private business world. We've had the recent example of moving a stone, the Edinburgh stone, from the stadium to the university, costing $20,000. Private industry could have done it for 10% of that. The rest of it is basically health and safety and all the other hurdles and impediments and paperwork involved in trying to contract to the DCC. Health and safety has been out of control for some time in terms of the extreme amount of risk aversion and cost involved to contractors to try and comply. I know this from personal experience, but I've heard it from a lot of others as well. Stephen Fry has quite famously said that health and safety are the two most dangerous words in the English language, referring again to the enormous cost involved in trying to comply and trying to make liable anybody else but us for anything that we do. If we now force a carbon management policy on all of our contractors, as 3.1.1 of this motion plainly says, it's a catch-all for all contractors, I believe that the health and safety madness in terms of escalating cost will be added to by the need for contractors to address a policy, which we could simply do as a desktop exercise without including contractors in this policy at all. It wouldn't stop us from doing it, because as you said, at this stage, we're only going to estimate what their usage is based on the cost of the contract. So if we're only going to do that, why do we have contractors listed as having this policy applied to in this document? I could vote for this, given our ETS requirements and given our statutory requirements, if we remove the references to contractors in 3.1.1 and in 5.1.4. But as it is, this opens the floodgates for enormous extra cost for limiting the number of contractors that can actually apply, and for imposing what at the end of the day is essentially a personal view of the world and a policy, which I don't believe has been voted for by the majority of the needed people. And if people understood the implications and the costs of, for instance, the 25-page emissions document that we had at the last election, at the last meeting, I don't believe that there would be support for imposing this policy on contractors as well. For us to impose on ourselves certain requirements, and there are a lot of them here, I think is one thing. But when we cross the Rubicon, when we say this is what our contractors are going to be doing, this is what the contractors are going to be liable for, then we basically create a division in Dunedin society, where there will be council contractors that meet certain requirements, and they will be the only ones to get a look in. Everybody else will be in the wilderness. And that, I believe, is going to be very injurious for Dunedin businesses ongoing into the future. Unless we can soften this to remove the contractors, I can't vote for it, and I would urge other councils not to vote for it as well. Simply vote against.
Are there any other speakers? Well, I'll be supporting this. Would appear that councillor Vandis didn't understand the answers he had to his questions. This doesn't impose anything on contractors at the moment. This is mainly seeking, as I think Amy referred to, an informational platform to then consider any further policy on. I guess I find the environment around this quite a little frightening in a way, because legislation is changing all the time, the consciousness of the need to deal with our carbon problems is growing even with this government, and the responsibilities, the obligations, the liabilities and the potential costs on councils are just going up on a steep, on a steep line, whether we like it or not. And it really behooves us to get ahead of the game so at least we understand what the database is before we can make a policy. Because, and I had a conversation around the waste minimisation fee the other day, which led me to appreciate all the more how the licensed operators of, for instance, landfills, and I think councillor O'Malley is absolutely right, that the landfill is one of the big things coming up for us. The licensed operators and their rate payers are shouldering by far the greater burden around the country, whereas unlicensed operators are not, and they're not subject to it. And that's just one example of where the costs of dealing with carbon are being unfairly allocated to those people who have to sit within certain definitions within the law. So the sooner that we know exactly where the carbon is being produced and what emissions are right across the board, the sooner we'll be able to address it and more fairly apportion the costs of dealing with it. So I think we must, we must go ahead with this, even if it's because it's the requirement of the law that we do. So with that, councillor Benson-Pope, do you wish to exonerate? Councillor Newell? All right, I'm going to put it. All those in favour, please say aye. Against?
No.
Division, please.
Division?
Aye.
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 Aye.